Okay, now can we stand in uh?
Hey, how are you? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we put these in, we have one thing to add to that. We have a uh, what is it? About, what do you, I'm trying to keep on my page. Uh, about uh, repairing a car.
Yeah, it's a settlement for a damaged wheel bearing. That's one agenda item. The other one is the incentives to industry.
We're not gonna do that one.
You don't wanna put that one on there? Okay.
I'll back out.
Okay, alright. Just do the other one then.
My goodness, sir. So, could we add to the agenda, uh, wheel bearing settlement and then uh, we do agenda approve?
Make the motion to approve.
All in favor?
Uh-huh.
opposed? Okay, that's good. Consent agenda. Oh, no, oath of office. We got Cody Gibson and Kevin Pique.
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 Kevin Pique.
Do y'all have Dan on here that lot to come up with?
Yes, ma'am.
Mm-hmm.
That is making you to write your writing, if you like, and I'm gonna say aye, and then you will state your name, and then after I get through, you will say aye. Are there any ayes?
Kevin, please.
To solemn swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, that I will be faithful and very truly to the State of North Carolina, and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, that I will be alert and vigilant to enforce the criminal law for this state, that I will not implore in any manner on account of personal bias or prejudice, and that I will faithfully and impartially execute the duties of my office as a law enforcement officer according to my skill, ability, and judgment so long as I am.
There you go.
Alright, congratulations.
Thank you.
Um, I just think you signed it, and you have to, you gotta, wanna say if you were.
I just appreciate the opportunity.
Welcome aboard.
I think y'all, is what y'all would call the ballot or?
Thank you, ma'am.
Aye, state your name, and then after getting to the bottom, aye.
Cody Gibson.
To solemn swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, that I will be faithful and very truly to the State of North Carolina, and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, that I will be alert and vigilant to enforce the criminal law for this state, that I will not be implored in any manner on account of personal bias or prejudice, and I will faithfully and impartially execute the duties of my office as a law enforcement officer according to my skill, ability, and judgment so long as I am.
Sorry, we got it.
Alright, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all very much. Uh, next on the agenda is the consent agenda. We need approval.
Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
All in favor? Opposed? Passed. Next is public comment. Anybody who wishes to address the board, please provide your name and address. Anybody wanna come forward and address the board?
Serona Alfred, 103 East King Circle. Good evening. Well, I had some complaints that needed some attention for quite a long while, but I'm here today to say that those complaints were taken care of. Very nice. And I wanna thank the crew that came out. They did a wonderful job, and I do think it's gonna work with whatever situation that others have. And I wanna thank them.
Thank you so much. Anyone else? Please state your name and address.
Clarissa Alfred Powell, 104 East King Circle. I also own the lot of 102 East King Circle. Beside those two lots, there is a easement, it seems. I'm not sure if it's an easement, but it's some sort of a station that's owned by the town of Benson, and I just would like to know when that, what's gonna be done with that. I think it might be on the agenda. I'm not sure, but right now it is now overgrown, where before I was able to see the building and the grass was cut. Now it just seems as if it's just being overgrown and no one's taking care of it. That's there?
We're looking into it.
Perfect. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one else coming forward, uh, please, all business. Discussion on the twenty-five, twenty-six budget.
Yes, sir. In your packet tonight, um, council has a, an assignment, a cover letter. You have a actual budget amendment. Um, what I'm recommending tonight to the board, as we discussed on the calendar last week, was that the balanced budget that we presented to you, um, was a budget that took the, took the revenues and expenses that were in the adopted budget on May twenty-second and put it into the correct, um, allocations across the funds. It also balanced the budget. It meets statutory requirements, and it also has, has got, it has a proper municipal accounting. All that's doing is allow, is putting it in the type of order that allows the finance director to be able to spend those dollars the way they're appropriately supposed to be spent. Uh, the previous budget did not have the allocations across the fund. So, all this document does today is, is adopt that balanced budget from last week, um, as an interim basis so that, uh, the finance director can spend the dollars appropriately, and then on, then on September sixth, as the calendar that you all agreed to, we will have a budget work session. All the department heads will be there. They will give presentations. We will have, go through all of the, all of the items that you want to speak about, and you all can then make the further amendments that you would like to make to the budget for the remainder of the year. And then we would bring that back to your September ninth meeting for, you know, work session for one more look. You could either adopt it that night as a final one, or you could wait till your September eighteenth meeting to do so. Uh, so, what this, this will put us in a position to be legal, uh, as far as spending the dollars, and then on the sixth, we're gonna have an entire day where the board can then tell us what further amendments you would like to make.
So, this is a must that has to be done tonight, and that's why it was done before air planning.
Yes, sir.
Meeting where they will go back after we look at it and hear theirs. We could still make decisions on what we can and, and can't have. Is that right?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
So, they may have to go back to the drawing board themselves after that September.
After that meeting, yes, sir.
Okay. But there was no way we could have that meeting first before we got this, uh, this is a must.
This is a must in order for the finance director to appropriately be allocating the funds.
I make a motion that we pass that, so they can pass that amendment.
Motion for any further discussion? In favor? Okay, that carries. Okay, next, uh... Do we do further discussion on the budget?
No, that was the discussion, yes, sir.
New business, financial report, Angie.
Alright. Good evening, everyone. Um, first I wanna apologize, 'cause you just got these financials right, they're at your seats, uh, so I know that you need time to look over them. What you have before you is the March, April, and May financials. I'm working on June and July. I will get those to you, and then moving forward, you will be getting a financial, you'll get, be getting statements and a monthly report that is current.
And in that statement, what will it, it, will he give me a bank balance? And also, what we've got right here, as far as what is up?
Oh, well, like what I sent you earlier today? Yes, I, I can get that to you anytime that you, yes, I'll keep that running spreadsheet. So, you will be getting that, and you can, anytime, you can email me or call me, and I've had those numbers. Okay? So, if y'all have any questions after you, um, review them, give me a call or send me an email.
So, what you sent us earlier today, that is, that is the, um, that include what's in the bank and everything?
Yes, that as of today, August the twenty-first. Mm-hmm. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor and count, and board, I would like to thank Angie for working hard. I mean, she's been, she's been working literally, I would say, round the clock to get you back all the way to March. And so, and going forward, we'll have, she'll have it every month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else? You can have a take rate.
Okay, I got the next one.
Roger, report a poll.
Okay, um, tonight I have, um, two advisory, um, appointments. The first one is for the cultural arts board. Um, that's Valerie Kenny, and she will be, um, accounting. And then also for the board of adjustments, um, Brian Whitman, he'll be, um, in the ETJ, and this will, um, fill up the board of adjustments, but, um, at the end of this month, 'cause it's time for, for me to put the, um, vacancies coming up after December thirty-first, so that'll go out and, but these will, um, these will carry on till the, like, the twenty-seventh, December twenty-seventh. So, I just need a motion to...
I'll make that motion that we, uh, accept Brian Whitman and also Valerie Kenny.
Yeah.
Anybody, any discussion? All in favor?
Alright.
Alright, thank y'all.
Town manager report.
Uh, I think you want to tackle the damaged wheel bearing first, and, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll give it a, uh, overview, and then, uh, town attorney will speak to you about the settlement document. Uh, I was contacted by Dr., uh, by Miss, by Miss Dorothy Rayner, who had hit a pothole in, in, in the dark. It was at night. And it's at the intersection of South Dunn and East Brockland, damaging a wheel bearing, uh, a wheel bearing, uh, with a, a repair cost of four hundred and forty-three dollars and two cents. She submitted a letter and a copy of the bill asking the town to cover her repair costs, and essentially a claim. The intersection in question, um, has, was in, was in, is in, was in bad, very bad condition. There were three to five good-sized potholes in the intersection. The town has periodically, in the past, gone in and put, uh, you know, a gravel-sand type of fill in it, but it washes out every time there's a good rain. That's been done for quite some time. Uh, we took care of that yesterday. Um, there is now, uh, a, a, a cold asphalt patch in each of those potholes, not only there, but down the streetaways and one over on, one or two over on Lee Street. Because those weren't taken care of and, and patched like that, um, what the, uh, and we, we, we gave that to the, the insurance company, and they told us that since it was under five hundred dollars, it'd be something that the town would have to pay. Um, and I'm recommending to the board that we do pay it, because those potholes should have been patched a long time ago.
And I agree with you, but it's a lot of potholes in Benson that people are messing up the cars on. So, I'm just wondering now, how many are we gonna be able to pay?
It, it would, it, it's, it's gonna depend on whether someone actually hits the pothole, best answer I've got, Ms., uh, Mr. Holly. Um, we're going to go around and find those, and we will cold patch them. We can't afford to do the, you know, the, all digging up and all that. But I wanna take care of them, and, and so that's what I'm saying, is we did so on Dunn Street, and we did so on Lee yesterday, and we'll go around and find the others as well.
Steve, I, I do wish that you would check with Jay or whoever is handling the cold patch or, and see what the difference is, because cold patch does not last long at all, and we used to get a big dump truck of, of hot patch, and they would cut out a little strip and put it down, and then move to the next one. That versus cold patch, uh, let's say, because it, it's just like we've always been, uh, talking about. There's not an intersection anywhere in town. Uh, I know what William said, let's borrow eight million dollars and patch everything, or, or... But you, you can't do that. I know we're limited in what we do, but just compare the cost of cold patch to a load of hot patch.
Okay.
Uh, I know we used to get by with that, and then we would roll it, and it would stay a lot longer than, than cold patch does.
I'm aware of cold patches is only, is not a long-term fix. I'll get the price for you and bring it back, and you all can take a look at that.
Okay, thanks, sir.
At, at one time, I thought there was like a, a list of, do you remember, Angie, like a list of areas in town that had the, uh, potholes?
Jay has got there. He's, he, he rides, he rides the street and see, that's where the power money, that's also where the power money comes in too. He keeps up with, or he's told me that that's why he keeps up with that, uh, that what's priority. But if a whole street's priority, and we've got twenty, uh, streets that's got potholes, we better look at the potholes before we do the street.
Yeah. We, we're gonna have to look at the potholes first, 'cause we just don't have the dollars to do the streets total.
So, the insurance cover's starting at five hundred?
Yeah, it, it's over five hundred. That's like a deductible, you know, like any insurance would have. So anyway, I'm gonna turn it over to, to Ike to talk about the settlement claim document, so.
Well, any questions? I've asked pretty standard, is a release that you'd have somebody sign when you settle a claim, not admitting any fault, but it's a more legal, um, requirement.
I got one quick.
Alright.
So, DOT road, they got a pothole on my car. Did they do the same thing?
I don't know the answer to that. Probably not, unless it was something that they had knowledge of. Um, it would have to be pretty egregious.
Yeah.
In, in this particular case, the only reason we're doing it is because we knew, and we kept trying to patch it, and it just wasn't, wasn't fixable. It wasn't, it wasn't done with at least the cold patch to stop it.
I would, I would say too, you know, it's a legitimate concern, and the, the concern that you think you're hitting around and setting a precedent. What I would suggest, with funds being always, and always gonna be limited, um, is that if there are any kind of, uh, spots on any kind of pavement in the, in the right of way in town, is to at least mark them, put people on notice. Because then, at least from a legal perspective, you've, you know, you've, you've alerted them to the danger. If they still run into it, then you, you, you... I, I would feel a lot more comfortable about our, um, our position legally if we at least, you know, put a sign, put some kind of marking. I don't know what's, it depends on the street and how much traffic is on and everything, what you can, you can't put a big cone or something in the middle of the street and block traffic, but if you le, at least do some effort to make the public aware of it. Um, that's another thing I think here is, um, it was at night, she didn't have any way to see it, so.
You know, that's something else Ike and it been brought up, especially recently, more than ever before. A lot of times, depending on what it is, we don't know who is the person to call. Do you call the town manager and say, okay, you've got a pothole here, or you've got, uh, some kind of electrical line? Does he do it, or do you try to get up with Ray or whoever it, it pertains to at the time? Uh, in the past, I mean, I got burned a new one just because I went and asked somebody, a, a department head. Now, that hadn't been in your time, but I ask a department head about something specific, and you don't go to a department head. You keep it, everything runs through the town manager, and then he is to take care of it.
I, I would say there's two ways to, to, to see that, Commissioner, and that is, number one, um, if you, if someone has a, 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 something to call about that, they can call town hall, and if it's like a pothole or something like that, they can send it down to the manager's office, and either Kayla, Kayla or myself will take care of it. The other thing, though, is if you see a pothole out there that is like a new pothole, and you wanna call Jeremy and say, Jeremy, there's a pothole on Dunn Street, please feel free to do so, just like any other citizen would be able to call and make that same request. That there, there's a difference between going down there and saying, you're gonna, you know, do something, as opposed to just calling and saying, oh, by the way, Glenn, I saw a, looks like a power, you know, a line is busted off of, off of a transformer, just like any other citizen could call the same thing. That's the difference.
Well, I feel a lot better about doing that now than I did before, and that's what I've done. I've called Jeremy, and I've called Glenn on several things, and they jump on it, but, uh, a lot of times we don't know, well, who takes care of this.
Yes, sir. It, if it's, if, if it's, like I said, any citizen wants to call and say, hey, you know, they, they can do so. Um, it's, the difference is making, making, saying that, directing somebody to do it. That's the difference.
Okay. Any, have you more, more questions about that? So, do we need to, we need to motion, right?
We already had the motion.
You already do it?
Didn't we?
I don't think so.
Did you approve the?
I don't think so.
Okay.
No, I was asked, I asked a question about DOT.
I, I make a motion that we approve.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Next is town manager report.
Yes, sir. The only thing I had to report is, um, all non-essential town facilities we closed for Labor Day, which is a week from Monday.
Right. Town attorney.
I don't have anything right now, unless you have any questions for me.
Commissioner Holland.
Good.
I'm Glenn, I'm the Commissioner Glenn.
Good.
Commissioner Stein.
I don't have any, um, any reports or anything, but I do wanna reemphasize that we really appreciate the extra efforts that you've been making. I know you've been staying after hours, 'cause I get in town pretty late sometimes, and you are here working, so. Everything that you're doing is making a, a big difference in what we have going on, and I do appreciate it.
Yes. Well, I'd just like to say the same thing, 'cause I think I passed here, Sarah, then she was working, so.
So we really appreciate all you do and what you're doing. And I'll say my remarks for the September 6th meeting.
It's agenda.
I'm good to, does everybody know where the September 6th meeting will be? And well.
My office.
Okay.
I have a conference room upstairs. We're trying to figure out, I don't know if this is right, I'm saying, it's supposed to be open to public and it is, I guess, but I can't keep my office open on weekends and doors open. So what we'll do is put a sign on the door and if you're a public, you know, member of the public, you want to come up, just call the number on there, which would be probably my number. I'll go down and get you, bring you up. It's upstairs in my office.
And the reason why we're having to do that is that this, this, this room is, the church on Saturday. The fire department's got training and the community center has also got some activity that Saturday. And so the mayor was, was generous enough to offer his facility.
Oh, I do have a question. Just thought of something. So is, is this room ready, all ready for the, until the end of the year? Because I had someone to...
On Saturday.
On Saturday. And what about Sundays?
Sundays, there is a church here. I'll have to get with Tawanda and see how, if they're here every Sunday or not, but every Saturday it's booked.
And how, okay, let me ask you a question. So how does that work? Are they paying like for the whole year? Because the reason I ask is because someone had called me wondering what other facilities in town can they rent? Because I think they had inquired and they were told that it was already taken. It was a church or something. So they were like, are y'all letting the churches take up all of the rental time for the conference room?
The one that's here on Saturday has been here since I started and it's been five and a half years and they pay every month.
So is it just this room or are they also using the?
I, I assume they just use these two.
This part?
These two rooms. But now I'm sure that they have anything they're, they're welcome to. I guess like they probably use the kitchen too. Like I said, this was started back before I got here.
So are, are they renting both spaces or is all?
The way Kim told me, they're renting the whole, this whole conference center.
Okay. And when, when does that end?
They usually just renew every, I mean, like I said, it's been like five and a half years. I don't remember when they started.
Yeah. I did get a complaint and that person said, you think it was fair that if someone else wanted to rent, that it's been like rented out the whole year to a church. Okay.
We could take a look.
Yeah, that's something that they asked.
It's a policy thing that the board would have to consider.
Right. Because the current fee schedule does state for the conference center that we don't accept new rentals only for partners and nonprofits. And again, like Angie said, that's been in place since I got here. I don't know the history of why it's in there. But that's why the Saturday and Sunday rentals are the organizations that have been in here for, for a long time. And it's not generally open to new rentals. At least this, these rooms are not. But again, that is totally.
I do know the old Civic Center on Johnson Street, they have rented that out to different organizations before for different things. But I don't know that the L-shaped building that their Parks and Rec is moving into, if they'll have, if they'll have any extra room in any of the classes or not. Something that...
So they will have multipurpose rooms, but I don't know that they will have, as Matt and Tim, there won't be one as large as the front room where we held the board meetings, but they will have two multipurpose rooms there that can be used as like the smaller classrooms.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I hear a motion, we go to closed session.
I made that motion.
Read that number.
I made a motion to go into closed session. Under NCGS 143 dot three, 18 dot 11.
Okay. All in favor? All right, good. Close session. Got to find it later.